Good evening, I want to call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order. If you'll please stand for our invocation and pledge.
Let us pray. God who created us for this unique place in all of your creation, give us the wisdom to discern the truth that we may choose always the path of justice and peace. Guide us to dream boldly, choose wisely, act responsibly, to provide what is necessary for those who have public service, and to recognize what is needed by all the citizens who live, learn, work, and play here. We're thankful for this season and for the diversity in our faith and practices. Show us how to preserve this freedom for ourselves and future generations. Amen.
I've asked the members of the Carter's football team to lead us in the pledge tonight.
(Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible)
Ms. Keating, the role please.
Carrie Hyde, Ward 1, here. Jay Stepp, Ward 2.
Here.
Louis Tonsmore, Ward 3.
Here.
Lindsey McDaniel, Ward 4. Diane Tate, Ward 5.
Here.
Taffrey, Ward 6.
Here.
Thank you Connie, first order of business is the approval of our meeting, excuse me, our meeting minutes from December 1st. Council, you've had these well in advance of this evening, had an opportunity to look them over, now would be the chance to make any edits to that. If there are none, a motion to approve would be in order.
So moved, ma'am.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We will start tonight by honoring our 2016 addition of the Cartersville High School Football Team, state champs in Quad A. Congratulations gentlemen. Yeah, let's clap for them. We are honored to have with us tonight the graduating senior class members of that football team, along with coaches and family members, and even Edgar's here. So, we appreciate that. What I'd like to do, I've got a proclamation that I'm gonna read, and you can see on the table in front of you, there's about 100 and whatever of those to be distributed to all the players on the team. But I'm gonna read this proclamation, and when I'm done with that, I'm gonna ask Coach King to come forward and say a few words, and then afterwards, I'd like to, after that, we're gonna get a group photo facing out that way, and Rebecca will take the picture there. And then after that, there's a, we've got a rather lengthy agenda tonight, but we're not gonna make you sit through that. We'll let you go do something else if that's all right. You're welcome to stay, but you're also welcome to go. So, I think I know which way you're gonna be heading in that direction. Let me, let me go ahead and read what these proclamations say, and like I said, each of you have a signed copy that you'll get here tonight. It says, "Whereas the 2016 Cartersville High School Football Team completed their season with a perfect 15-0 record for the second year in a row, becoming the 11th team in the state to achieve back-to-back 15-0 seasons. Whereas the team was 4-0 in non-region play," some of these numbers are gonna sound gaudy, I don't know if y'all have looked at these or not, but, "The team was 4-0 in non-region play, outscoring their opponents by a combined score of 155 to 21. Whereas the team was 6-0 in region play and were crowned 5 Quad A Region Champs. And whereas they outscored their region opponents by a combined score of 306 to 50, including a 68-0 victory in the region championship game. Whereas they defeated playoff opponents by a combined score of 234 to 60. And whereas this team's senior class finished with a career record of 53 and 3, and were undefeated in region play for their four years. Whereas for the season, the team outscored their opponents 695 to 131." And this was the other stat that I kinda pulled out, you know, people would say, "Well, who did they play?" "Ten of their 15 opponents were ranked in the top 10 of their respective classification at one point during the season. Whereas the entire Cartersville Purple Hurricanes Football Team program, its team coaches, managers, support staff, band, cheerleaders, and touchdown club represented the entire Cartersville community with pride and class while achieving excellence. And whereas the Cartersville Purple Hurricanes earned the school's fourth football state championship at the George Dome on December the 10th of 2016 by defeating Thompson by a final score of 58 to 7, and were crowned GHSA 2016 Quad A State Champions. Now therefore, I, Matthew J. Santini, Mayor of the City of Cartersville, along with the City Council, declare December of 2016 as Hurricane Football Championship Appreciation Month, and urge all citizens to recognize not only this great achievement, but also to follow the spirit of dedication, unity, and community pride that the 2016 Cartersville Purple Hurricane Football Team displayed in earning the state championship." We can applaud again. Coach King, sure.
Just wanna tell you guys, thanks for taking time out of your meeting to recognize us. It's an honor and a privilege to not only just represent this school, but this community as well, and we're definitely blessed to be here. I wanna go on record to say that I have a great group of young men and a phenomenal group of coaches. My job is to not mess things up every day. So, that's truly a testament to these guys and their hard work. We just wanna say thank you for recognizing us tonight, so thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I'll take a picture.
Yeah, now it's your picture. Thank you everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you y'all.
Alright, and so we move on with a series of appointments tonight. The first, well Sam, why don't you go ahead and handle these three appointments, please.
First one is the Health Board appointee, Tanya Hamree, to be reappointed through term 12/31/22.
And Chair will entertain a motion if there's no discussion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, next item please.
Yeah, Keith says you need to do these individually, but these are for the reappointments of Judge Harry White and the Assistant Judge Jay Choate.
Okay, so we'll take up the consideration, the swearing, the Municipal Court Judge, Judge Harry White. Any discussion, and if not, a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, and Assistant Municipal Court Judge Jay Choate.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Now Connie, are you supposed to swear them in now? We'll sit back and watch you do that. We make everybody else speak into the microphone, and then you stand over there to do it.
You have to tell us who you are and where you live.
Your address, phone number, you know, all your personal information.
(Inaudible) (Inaudible)
No, all I gotta say is, I do. Great. We have some first readings of ordinances, well actually, I'll wait for Connie to get back. Signing it, that's right.
Thanks, thank you for the job you do.
We have a couple of first readings of ordinances. Mr. Grove, if you'll get us started with the first one, please.
Yeah, the first is within council goals this year. We're kinda doing some year-end stuff. This has been run by the Pension Board. It cuts the guaranteed part of the pension in half, the old defined benefit multiplier. It shifts new hires to a new plan. It cuts our costs, and it has the possibility of actually returning more to the people in the new plan, because it excludes the legacy costs that are with the old ones. So it's, we hope the best of both worlds. You've seen a lot of cities go to this hybrid plan, not this exact one, but something similar. And I think in private industry, you don't even see these at all anymore. It does not impact present employees or retirees. They'll be under the old one. And something that we've come up with, I know you don't have to vote on it tonight, but it's recommended for your approval.
Any questions about the hybrid plan, or direction we're going with this? Thank you. Mr. Lovell, you have the next item.
Yes Mayor, there are two ordinances concerning the municipal court. The first one is giving the judge greater flexibility in scheduling court on Mondays, and stating that there will not be any court on the 5th Monday in any month. The second one deals with doing away with some of the surcharges that the city has, and just merging all of that into our current fine schedule, as recommended by the Municipal Courts Association for Georgia. And that's pretty much it. And also you have a, contained in there, a list of the new fee struck fines for the city court for your review, and if you take no action with respect to it, they will be adopted within 30 days.
Is there any question or discussion on this? I know we're not voting on it tonight, but does anybody need any clarification or any discussion need to be had relative to it? Seeing none, we will move on. We'll take both of those items up for consideration, our first meeting in January. Mr. Lovell, you've got a lot of talking to do tonight. Why don't you go ahead and start with this item?
The next item is a resolution and an agreement, basically, for the Homeless Shelter Action Committee, Inc., on 8, 10, 12, 14, 16, 18, 20, and 22 Johnson Cove in the city to build low-income transitional housing. And to encourage them to do that, the city is going to waive its capacity fees. I believe the amount will be 50% of the current capacity fee, which is $2,320 per property. And it is recommended for your approval, I believe. The only thing to note is that, since this is a capacity fee waiver, the city will have to make up that difference in the, from the general fund into the capacity fee fund.
I think technically, they need to fill in that blank. You left a blank, right?
It was left blank in the ones I sent to you. It's my understanding that you want the blanks to be 50%.
That is what I believe to be the consensus of council. I would guess that we need to have that in, as part of the motion, should one come, be forthcoming. So, is there any other discussion or questions that need to be had on this? And if not, someone would like to have a motion that might contain that percentage?
Motion that the capacity fee be 50% of what is normally charged.
Is that said correctly?
And I'm assuming you're approving the resolution and the agreement as well?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No, to recuse myself from that vote.
He's on the board.
That's correct. Sorry, I forgot, I shouldn't have mentioned that. So, motion carries 4 to, 4 to none with one abstaining, or recusing.
If you do have any issues, just call us.
Thank you. The next item, Keith, is a deed of gift.
Yes Mayor, over at Lenox Park, there is a lot 51 over there that the property owners wish to dedicate to the city. It's been appraised at 22,500 by Glen Harris Appraisal Services, and it is recommended for your acceptance. There's actually a little portion of the curb and guttering that was built on this lot, so it does serve some useful purposes for the city to accept the dedication.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion or questions on this item? And if not, a motion is in order.
So moved. Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Frye, you've got the next item, please.
Thank you, good evening Mayor, council members. This item is a relocation agreement. It is between the city and Aldi, Inc. of Georgia. This is a, an agreement to reimburse our cost to relocate an existing gas facility that is in conflict with the construction of the Aldi facility. And we recommend approval of this item.
Okay, any questions or discussion?
This is something that we typically do, and you can see within the body of the agreement, the reimbursement amount is $12,407.
That is correct.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you Brian.
Thank you.
Mr. Lovell, the next two for you again, please.
Thank you, the first is a approval of an easement and settlement agreement with respect to Georgia Transmission Corporation for a new line along Sugar Valley Road. And it has been reviewed by all of the staff and utilities, which is why we have the settlement agreement, because we had some special conditions to add in there. It is recommended by them. They are paying us roughly $18,260 for this easement as well. So both are recommended for your approval.
Okay, any discussion on this item?
These poles will be a little bit larger than the ones that are there, but it'll clean up the look, and it'll get all the utilities along that corridor on one set.
Any other discussion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Keith, the next one.
Next one is a water line, water line easement. We need for water line replacement along Irwin Street. It is from Omni Kim. Although your package has a settlement agreement in it, that is not actually being done anymore. There's just the water line easement that y'all will need to approve, and the actual purchase price. And the purchase price that is shown in the documents is $24,220. However, the actual price is $25,535. So I would recommend y'all approve it at the higher price. This easement will allow the city to finish this project, and I believe is the last property that is needed to commence the project. Is that correct Bob?
Thank you. Any discussion on this item?
Mayor, that's not the numbers we have here.
Correct, Keith noted.
Correct, yes, the new number is $25,535.
Okay, and if you want to include that dollar amount in the motion, just to make sure that's cleared up and matches your packet information, that'd be fine too. Can't make a motion, so I'll sit here and wait for one of y'all to do it.
What happened? I made a motion to approve with the exact dollar amount that Keith said.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Sounds like we've done it to the Christmas tree.
As if that wouldn't be comical enough, Bob, come on up.
I said $500,000?
Bob, I thought you were gonna call these Archimedes, Bob.
Well, yeah. I've got a name for them, but I won't say it here. First up in our slate of gearbox issues is, this will be the number four gearbox on our screw pump. If it helps the medicine go down any bit, anymore. There are only four of these in the secondary. We've done three, assuming this one gets approved, so we're getting there, it's getting better. You originally authorized a rebuild of this gearbox in October. Once they tore into it, realized that a rebuild was just not a realistic way to deal with it. So what we've got for you tonight is a new replacement unit. The low price came from Overton Chicago Gear, which is direct from the manufacturer. And that price is $22,975, and would recommend your approval of that.
Mayor, your question. Bob, remind me what the rebuild price was?
What we did, I don't remember what they quoted us, but what you did, if I recall, was authorized up to $35,000 for that rebuild, because we were just sort of guessing at what it would need. Until they take it apart, break it down, actually look at it, and they x-ray the metal to look for microscopic cracks and do all that, you really don't know what it is you're getting into. So they quote you a base rebuild, and with the understanding that if we have to start replacing hard parts, the price goes up very fast. So you capped us at 35. That's why, and they knew that, because when we looked at it and tore it apart, they were like, "You're gonna be at 30-something thousand dollars to rebuild this thing. We think you should look at purchasing a new one." And it turns out, that was, that was good advice.
We saved a lot, man.
Yeah, we saved, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood of $7,000 or $8,000.
And the ability to buy it direct from the manufacturer.
And the ability to buy it direct from the manufacturer, right.
Alright, any other discussion on this item? If not, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, Bob. Actually, why don't you talk about these next two together, because they're pretty much the same thing.
They really are, yeah.
We'll put them all into one motion.
These are two of the aerators, those of you who've been out there are familiar with it. These are things that chop the water and put dissolved oxygen into the air to let the bio, biological part of the plant live. We have two of these on the same basin that have gone down. The first one that we'll discuss is what we refer to as Bio 2 Number 2. There's a total of three, so this is the number two position. This box had what we call a catastrophic failure. It was running, and then one part of it stopped moving. And you can imagine in a gearbox what happens after that. Lots of large metallic pieces go flying everywhere, and it's just, it's the end. It literally explodes. As you can imagine, that does quite a bit of damage. When we went to look at this other gearbox, all three of them were down there at the same time, and they had them all taken apart, and it's amazing what happens to this thing. All of that is to say that in order to repair this box, we're looking at a price of $63,925 to rebuild it. And just to give you a little point of reference on what that looks like, when we had the first one of these aerators go down several months ago, we looked at a new replacement cost. And the range of costs there were, I believe, from $140,000 to $160,000 for a brand-new unit. So that kinda gives you an idea of where we are as far as getting some functional piece of equipment back. The second box, as you mentioned, the last item on the agenda, the Bio 2 Number 3, that box is 30-some-odd years old. And it was just making a squealing sound, something that you would automatically know that is not right. So we shut it down and shipped it down there with this one. And what it has is it's just had, the bearings are worn in it. They're worn out, they're about to fail, but it has not detonated like the other one. And for that reason, we're doing what you would consider to be a base rebuild, and that price is $34,960. So you save quite a bit by not letting these things run, you know, to complete failure. We are recommending that we award both of these to Motoring Gear Engineering. If you recall, about a year ago, when the first box failed, we did price with two vendors repairing these boxes. We called the original equipment manufacturer. They gave us the two authorized vendors for repair. One's in Greer, South Carolina, I don't recall the name, and Motoring Gear in Doraville. And when we priced those, Motoring Gear on the repair was half of the cost of the place in South Carolina, for the exact same scope of work. So for that reason, we priced with Motoring Gear. They've done a good job on the one they repaired, we're happy with it. They've come out, they've serviced it, stood behind it. Have no reason to think that they won't do a good job.
So you're comfortable even with the more extreme of the two rebuilds, that once they're done, they're gonna have a pretty extended life? Man, I know you can't look into a crystal ball and say, but you feel comfortable in making that judgment that it's, the $65,000 for the rebuild is still...
It does, and there's another thing at issue here too, as you're all aware, we're getting ready to put a considerable amount of money into the wastewater plant for this nutrient upgrade. There's a chance that some of the aeration technology could change as a result of that, so that makes me take even a greater step back from looking at putting in new, because we could be walking, we could be walking away from it, or changing it to some degree. And I think that's a, that's another good reason to look at these rebuilds as the right way to go.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or discussion on this item for Bob? If there's not, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve?
Both?
Yes, for both items. Your motion for both?
Yes.
Thank you. All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you Bob. Ms. Bowlander, you have the next item, please.
Mayor, council, this is the invoice for the upcoming 2017 citizen survey. The total for the survey is $13,860, and they are asking for the first payment of $9,500.
Okay. Any discussion, and if not, a motion.
Motion to approve.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Porter, the next two.
Yes Mayor, the first item is Barracuda Email Archive Support Renewal. This is an annual renewal that maintains our email server, and it's a cost of $7,348.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. One Beacon Insurance Deductible.
Yes Mayor, this next item, there's three different claims on that, that One Beacon, our former carrier, this is, it goes back to some claims that were in our last fiscal year. One of the majority of that was a bodily injury claim on an accident that was involved one of our city vehicles. And then there's two other smaller claims within that. Total amount that we need to reimburse that, that's under our deductible, is $24,556.61.
Thank you sir. Any discussion, questions for Dan on this item? If not, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
A motion?
Second.
Thank you sir. All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you Dan. We have some discussion items. You knew better than I did, when I turned the page, that you're still up there, Mr. Porter.
That's right, Mayor, this next item, sorry, the 2020 SPOSS list, though it's in your agenda packet. This is just an item that the city manager and staff put together as possibilities for the next SPOSS. Just something for you guys that's on your council visioning session to consider. Any updates, changes you may want to have add to that list, just let us know, and we can try to price those out.
Again, this is just the beginning of the process. Sam, as you mentioned, is in line with council goals. I'm just trying to get things out there, and certainly with the total dollar number at the bottom of that.
If there's anything within that list that doesn't look right to you, or anything else you'd like to suggest, this is just something we put together to get the ball rolling.
Yeah, I would just like to add, I want the council to take consideration that the Parkland North End is something that is near and dear, and keep it top of the list.
As I was, as I was mentioning, the one challenge for staff, and again, I want to make note of this every single time that I can, is, you know, we've got professionals that are trying to make prudent business decisions with taxpayer money, and it sure would be nice to be able to get better records from the Department of Revenue that would help us make projections and kind of understand where the sales tax dollars are and where they're going, so. Well, that way, when there's a dollar amount at the bottom of that page, that there's a little bit more documentation behind it. I know y'all are doing the best you can with very limited information, so. Thank you for that, for that projection. I'm sure as usual, you've projected the revenue's very low and the expense is very high.
That's based on the current collections we're having now. Where the current SPOSS is being collected over, it's on a second year collection, so choosing those same numbers, I mean, no, when we get into those meetings, we'll have additional, we'll do some performance analysis. We're gonna say it's gonna grow a little bit, but again, you gotta make those lists and say, there's something may not happen because of dollars don't come in.
So anyway, thank you to the staff for putting that together. And then we've got, again, we've got time, I'm sure during our council visioning. If everybody could just take a look at these, and if there's any other, you know, if there's nothing that says we can't discuss this at our first meeting in January, if somebody's got an item, or if we need to revisit this, the better direction that we can give staff for what our... can give staff for what our needs are, and the better they can put those things on a list. So that's why it's a discussion item. Anything else to add on that SPOSS discussion?
When do we have to have it completed?
Diane's holding her fingers to her lips. What's that?
When do we have to have it completed?
Sometime in 2018.
So we've got plenty of time. Diane's holding her fingers to her lips because she can't speak and she's also wishing for the quiet zone.
We'll probably, Carrie will probably have enough discussion with county.
She was, actually.
For some reason, I thought it was-
The subtle reminders.
We'd all do that together. And remember, there's an agreement between all the cities and the counties, so it's just what we're about to say on all that stuff.
Gotcha.
All right. If there's no other discussion on that, Dan, the next discussion item is relative to the airport.
Yes, Mayor. It's a grant application, actual acceptance. We did receive funding approval in the amount of $661,262 for the Cartersville-Barto Airport. Money runs through the city's books. That's why the city council has to approve that. If accepted, it's going to be the construction of the storm drainage system and land acquisition at the airport. The local match is going to be a little under $35,000, and the airport authority will be taking care of that. I recommend this for your approval.
Is this down as a approval item?
Yeah.
Okay. This is under discussion, so, no, it's not. It's under grant. My apologies. So now that I'm up to speed with what I'm supposed to be doing, does anybody else understand this? Matching grant application for the airport authority?
Yes.
All right. Is there any discussion? If not, a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Reinhardt, the financial reporter, please.
Honorable mayor and council, we're going to be looking at the October 2016 and comparing to October 2015. And the general fund revenues decreased, should be increased, no, I'm sorry, decreased over 2015 by $9.9 million. Remember, this is about the time last year that the school system paid off their bonds early, and their bond payment was about $9,800,000. The expenses have also decreased, again, due to the school system paying off early their bonds. Three areas of revenue that I look at on a monthly basis, the local ops and sales tax, where you have a decrease of about $87,000. Police fines and forfeiture, again, have a decrease of $56,000. Billing permits and inspection fees have an increase of about $49,000. In the Warren and Zuer Fund, revenues increased over last year by $750,000. Expenses increased by $112,000. This is due to increased personnel and increased capital expenditures. And the gas fund, revenues have increased over last year by $208,000. Expenses have decreased by $98,000, and this is due largely to decreased operating expenses. In the electric fund, revenues increased over last year by $1.1 million. Expenses decreased by $553,000, due mainly to decreased cost of electricity and decreased capital expenditures. Stormwater fund, revenues increased over last year by about $30,000. Expenses increased by $108,000. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, and increased capital expenses. Excuse me. In the solid waste fund, revenues increased over last year by $28,000, and expenses decreased by $69,000. This is due to decreased operating expenses and decreased capital expenses. And finally, in the fiber optics fund, revenues increased over last year by $15,000. Expenses decreased by $77,000. This is due to decreased debt service expenses and decreased capital expenses.
Thank you. These kind of fit where we typically are at this time of year. I mean, everything's, there's nothing out of the ordinary that you see.
Typically, right in the October timeframe, you're looking at most of the time having a loss in gas, you know, more revenue in electricity. Over time, those should balance out to come back to where everything's-
Typically have a loss in gas and a loss in general as it gets cold and we sell gas. That'll correct. Property tax comes in, general correct. You move away from the hot months and electric tends to not do so well. So it's kind of a cyclical thing that runs with our utilities. Gas and general correct, there's still a small deficit in storm for the year.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yes.
When you're referring to these general terms like personnel expenses and increased operating expenses, what exactly-
Personnel expenses typically is salaries, benefits, all of our benefits. Operating includes maintenance, fuel, gas, utilities, because the city does, even though we own our own utilities, we still pay utilities, anything that basically has to do with operating a department.
You have personnel, the retirement and the health benefits and salaries typically fit in there.
But what does, I mean- I mean, if you're down an employee and you haven't replaced that employee for a month, it's going to have a decrease in your-
The only other item-
I was wondering if we were talking about we're adding on additional jobs or if we're just increasing the expenses.
If you remember, last year also, we were at a smaller salary level. Raises were given out in July, affected July 1. With the increase in salaries, of course, that's going to bump everything else up also. Your FICA and your retirement costs, things like that.
We don't add persons that aren't operating on the budget. So when you all approve the budget, you approve the budget number. In order to add personnel, you have to come back to you and amend the budget to do that.
So I guess what else is worth noting is even though it may say that it's increased, you're comparing one year to the next and like you said, those things change. All these things are within budget. It's just comparing that month to month, there's going to be-
Of course, you know, the big thing that dis towards our budget are the utilities and what you tend to pay for gas to resell and what you tend to pay for electric to resell. It just blows the top of it all. And you've got to remember, too, that within our budget, we carry the property tax for the schools, too, so that inflates it as well. The only other classification that I think we didn't mention is the capital that runs at every piece, too. That's typically anything from light extensions in the utilities to roads, to buying police cars-
Typical capital.
-for fire equipment, yeah.
Water, infrastructure.
But in regards to that, on the personal expense note, other than, I guess, one department needs to add two or three employees that they did, that was in the budget that they haven't rehired, as far as pension, salary increase, benefits, all of that, that should be across the board for every department, correct?
For the most part, you're going to have increases in salaries over time as you, as the council has voted in those increases in pay, they go into effect at various times of the year. This year, they went into effect July the 1st, and those are across the board. Some funds are hit bigger than others and some are more noticeable than others. And I'm sure if I went back and analyzed line by line, I would see that, okay, there is increases in the fixed cost of salaries. It's just that those are, most of the time outweighed, mostly by some of the bigger, operational and like in the case in years past, where water has gone in and done a lot of infrastructure, capital items, it's kind of outweighed.
Well, I understand that. I was just saying, you know, to, I guess, task question is, on personnel expenses, you know, as far as if the rates go up on our insurance, 5%, that's across the board.
Correct.
That was just funny. So I guess when you say personnel, it would be salary.
Well, it's over from year, again, it's over from year to year. It's not, it's not that they're over budget, it's just over when you compare it to this past year.
I'm just saying in comparison to the following, the prior month or, yeah.
And as your salaries go up, once again, your cost of FICA goes up and your pension costs will go up also.
Oh, yeah.
Cool. We're good?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else, any other business needs to come forward, council, this evening?
Go to Santa Claus.
Wait, uh-uh, don't hit that, Gavel.
I'm not.
We're going to miss you.
Oh.
Everyone have a happy holidays, except for Jase.
We'll have a little spa rave for her.
That's all right. We're still going to mess her. I don't want to say it public.
Well, you hadn't said anything else, whole meeting's over.
I was working up that.
Trust me, she has. You just hadn't heard it.
She's been a lot about you, Jase. That's all I got to say.
Oh, mate.
Connie, job well done. We will save it for another meeting, but this, I guess this is your last meeting as it's going to be taking minutes and whatnot. And Brian, you still going to come to meetings or no?
Who's going to eat the cookies?
What makes you think we're going to get cookies?
We look forward to honoring you in an upcoming meeting, but you will be missed and appreciate-
I'm leaving you in capable hands, so.
That's a sign of good leadership, so we appreciate that. I do want to wish all of our employees Merry Christmas. Also, Hanukkah falls at the same time as Christmas this year, so Happy Hanukkah to those celebrating that. Whatever else you celebrate, I hope that goes for you well as well. We know that, I want people to remember to be safe and also to remember that while you're enjoying your family time, there are a number of people for the city of Cartersville that are working hard around the clock to provide those services that a lot of people take for granted. And hopefully, other than water, electric, and gas, we won't need the police and fire so much. Hope they have boring shifts over these holiday seasons. Anyone else? Motion to adjourn?
Come on.
There you go.